When you're ready, John.
Okay, we're streaming, but we're not ready. So no hot, no hot mic moments. And. Oh. You know what? All my stuff's still downstairs for all the running and never cut up my stuff. The streaming?
Good, how are you? Hanging on.
Mike, when you flying out tomorrow?
Um, I think they're early flight. Six fifteen, six thirty. Could get in at.
I know.
Get in at like four. Tomorrow night, tomorrow afternoon.
So you're gonna go to that reception? That NACO reception that night or?
Uh.
There's a reception tomorrow night.
I, I don't know. I haven't even looked this, figured it out yet. Um. Where is it?
Reception, it's at NACO headquarters.
Okay.
Do you mind giving the prayer this morning? Thank you.
Streaming. Oh, there it is.
It's, uh, looks like it's working.
Okay. The stream isn't going?
Uh, yeah, it was.
It was?
I pulled it up on my phone.
Oh.
It better be working.
Dan. Paul says it is, man.
I pulled it up of mine.
You need, do you require additional training?
That's, that's a.
Hit the renew button and it's, is it an old one going?
Maybe, maybe.
It's just a live.
Yeah, I thought it did.
Have a separate live thing. Education. It'll just automatically start playing an old one.
Well, what?
Joanna gonna be here? Is she already gone?
It was.
I think she's gone.
She's gone. I, I never did hear.
I haven't heard.
We got live now.
Guess we'll find out. I had no idea she was.
Me, you and.
No idea she was trying that. She's so good.
Hello.
Yeah. Welcome to my podcast. Okay, so there's that. Alright Commissioner, now you're ready to go.
Morning, welcome everyone. The Commission, Iron County Commission Meeting of the ninth of September two thousand nineteen is hereby convened. Um, at this time Bruce Washburn will lead us in the pledge of allegiance and Commissioner Cousins will then lead us in prayer.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in heaven as we gather this morning for this county commission meeting. We express our gratitude for the beautiful season that we're in and for the opportunities we have to meet together as as a commission, as staff, as guests and as citizenry of this county. We're so very grateful for the participation. We express our gratitude for our many blessings, for the beautiful valleys we live in and and for the favorable circumstances we, we find our lives in. We're so very thankful for our county employees and staff and pray that thou would bless them this day that they can be safe in their duties and and productive and be able to have thy blessings upon them and their families. We ask and pray, Father, that as we deliberate the issues before the county this day that thy spirit will guide and direct our decisions. We're very grateful the opportunity to govern ourselves in such a, such a manner and we we express our gratitude unto thee and acknowledge thy hand in our lives and and do so humbly in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you both. Okay, at this time we will start our reports, department reports with tourism and parks and recreation. Welcome Maria, how are you this morning?
Running. Good morning.
Morning.
Okay. Sorry, as I organize my thoughts here. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks.
Okay. So as of August thirtieth, we are at sixty-three percent of our TRT budget and thirty-seven percent of our restaurant tax budget spent. Um, the reason so low on the restaurant taxes is because we give a majority of our funds to outside entities. They generally like to wait until the end of the year to put in their requests for funds and they're also in the process of finishing up their projects. So I'm sure in the next couple of weeks we'll start seeing those invoices come in and that will probably, um, start to look more like a ninety percent by the time we get, get to my next report. Um. Collections are slightly up, however occupancies continue to drop. Uh, right now we're at three point two percent down from last year in terms of occupancy. Um, and in twenty eighteen, we were down six point two percent.
What do you attribute that?
Uh, there's a variety of factors. Short-term rentals are certainly part of that because they don't report. Um, and then we've also have noticed some declines in international market and international visitors, um, because the dollar is so strong. Um, we tend to, that's kind of the natural thing that happens is our international tourism starts to go down. Um, they're anticipating it will continue to go down until about twenty, twenty-three. So this is kind of a thing that's, um, we're gonna have to kind of get used to. We also have a lot of inventory because we were so successful for so many years in terms of the national park visitation. Uh, some inventory was built in that process, particularly in Washington County. Um, and they're, they're definitely reporting some higher declines than, than we are. So we consider ourselves fortunate at this point.
Do you, do you get any Zion National Park stats, uh, you know, ongoing through the year to know what the visitation is this year compared to last?
It's my understanding that the visitation is down, so, um, but I have not been able to get a full understanding as to what, um, because it's mostly anecdotal. Um, but we can go on to the National Park Statistical Website, which keeps track of it, you know, so, but I can, like Cedar Brakes is down. Pretty substantially from, at least in twenty eighteen, it was down quite a bit, almost three hundred thousand visitors. And to date it was down, but you know, we were also late in opening, so you know, I kind of have to have to wait a couple more weeks before we can really get a full picture.
Well, I think the right Zion proposed reservation system is definitely too soon.
Too soon.
Probably just a, a high peak and it's gonna level off some and, you know, with the visitation, so I, I just don't see the need for it as, as we've discussed.
Yeah.
First time.
There's definitely weekends of the year that, you know, it's full and they're, and it's a problem, you know, but they all, a lot of times those, those busy weeks come with free entrance days. So if we can evaluate the entrance fees and the free entrances, then I think we can alleviate some of the problems, so. Um, those could maybe come on a Tuesday rather on a holiday weekend or something like that, so anyways.
There's that. That's helpful.
Um. Just wanted to let you know that we were awarded three grants in the last couple of weeks. Um, we were awarded an AARP Improvement Grant for downtown Cedar City in the amount of thirteen thousand five hundred. Um, a Utah Office of Tourism Grant for Winter Marketing. This is our ongoing winter marketing grant, um, which after we get everybody's contribution would equal four hundred and four thousand dollars in advertising this winter season. And then we also received another grant from UOT, which was eighty-eight thousand and that will help us advertise in the off-season.
Is that typical Maria or is that, are these, is, do we get grants every year or?
Oh, I apply every year. We don't always get what we want, but, um.
This, is this, so this is good news, I mean.
Very good news.
Very good news. I mean, so typically we don't get this.
Not as, not to this extent.
That's good.
So, um, it's just a matter of me spending time putting in the grants and getting in the partnerships. Um, most grants have to have a, you know, a match and so I try to seek out as many partners as I possibly can. So like with the winter marketing.
Can TRT funding for the marketing be a, be the match?
Yes, it can, but it doesn't, it's better when I can get like outside partners to help us. So Bryanhead Resort, Bryanhead Town. Several lodging partners partnered with us on the winter grant. So. Which helped me alleviate, alleviate some of my, um, alleviate some stresses on my budget so that I could actually go after some more money for the off-season marketing, which we haven't been able to do because we've had to put so much effort into just general marketing. Um, which is typically just to try to maintain during the summertime. Um, but we haven't been able to kind of do that marketing when we really need it, you know, and so this is gonna help us try to figure out ways to bring people here in November or in May, so. So I'm excited about that one. Uh, visitation in the visitor center is kind of, it's ups and downs. Um. And so far we're kind of behind in visitation. I kind of maybe attribute that to what's going on with the construction on Main Street, so um, we'll kind of see how that goes. We're reevaluate, really reevaluating whether or not we should be open on Sundays. It's becoming harder and harder. Um, to justify being open on a Sunday. We don't get as many visitors as we would like. Um, and my, uh, weekend person is kind of struggling whether or not she'll continue to work with us. Um, and so we're kind of trying to keep her, uh, engaged because it is a difficult position to fill. And so we wanna, we don't want her to quit because she's not busy on Sundays. Um, and so it becomes a long, long period of time for her to be sitting at her desk and we have jobs for her to do, but it just kind of it's a bit of a strain on her show and she's in her seventies, so we just want to make sure, you know, that she's accommodated, but if we don't have the people, it doesn't just, you know, it's harder for us to justify. So we'll be reevaluating that. Um, as far as our workloads and caseloads are, right now we're working very hard on our, on our internet, on our website, which should be up in late October. Um, we have our two new hires, which are Wyatt, who's our media manager. He does all of our videography. And Kaylee, who's our social media manager. Um, they have been extremely busy, um, getting new footage, um, of all the events and activities around the county. Um, and they're working on videos, stories and series. And then, um, with Kaylee, she's doing a lot to give us some great press coverage. Um, she was behind the TripAdvisor article, which named Bryanhead as one of the top places to celebrate the Fourth of July. So she's definitely producing some great content for us. She actually was, um, behind, she pitched the story in which, um, it came out on Friday, uh, with Cedar City being one of the best fall, small towns to see fall colors. So these efforts are, are, they take a little time, but it's great press coverage for our area. Um, the wayfinding plan for Cedar City is still, is just basically an ongoing project. Um, we've had several meetings with UDOT, uh, to fix some of the outdated signs. We still have signs in Cedar City that say, still say Iron Mission State Park. We need those fixed. Um, and so some of them have been corrected with the Main Street paving project, but there are still there's approximately twenty-one thousand dollars worth of signs that have not been, um, corrected. And we're working with them to try and get those done and then working on with them to create a permanent wayfinding plan with branded um, signs that run throughout the community. Um, our next effort will be Parawan, uh, once we complete that. Uh, Bryanhead completed theirs on their own and it looks, it looks really nice.
Before you go on, going back one, uh, these, um, videos that Wyatt has done, are they completed and?
No.
Okay, how would we access those when they are completed?
So they will be on our YouTube site and then they'll also be running through our social media and then also there'll be a place for them on our website as well. So the issue that we're having right now is that his time is being spent getting the footage and there's not a lot of time to do the editing and putting him together. We knew this was gonna happen when we brought him on.
Sure.
We just didn't have an idea of how busy he was gonna be because everything happens on weekends and so we're kind of trying to manage his time. Um, so many of these things will probably be more formulated in the wintertime when, um, there's not as much stuff going on.
Yeah, well, that's great. I just, they just look so interesting. I'm looking forward to seeing them when they are ready.
Oh, they're gonna be, they're, um, they're gonna be really good. I'm, I'm excited. It was, it was probably the best money I've spent so far. So, because we're not, we're not buying it through a contract or, you know, it's in-house. We have a lot more control. Um, so we're excited by what he's doing. Uh, the Restaurant Tax Board provided a grant to Cedar City Airport to update the images and furnishings and signage at the airport. Um, we're starting to finish up this project. Unfortunately, it isn't gonna be done. Um, we wanted it to be done while we were having all this traffic at the airport. Um, but we've had some delays, but the things that are there, we've replaced the, the large photographs with updated photographs. Um, we've updated the wall, the S U U wall. Um, we've put in at least one video screen, which has videos running. Um, we have another video screen that's coming that will be more on the floor. The one that we have right now is up on, way up on the wall. Um. And so we're gonna have a couple in the, in the main terminal, um, and just uh, some better signage that's branded as you go into the airport. So just some basic updates, but definitely a big improvement. And then the meeting conference space feasibility study is moving along. We'll probably have a report for you, um, sometime in the end of the month. Um. So far, it's been an interesting ride, just looking at what is feasible and what is, what is not, so. I, I look forward to sharing that with you, but I don't want to do that until it's done. So, um, other than that, we're just attending some conferences in this next coming weeks. So any questions regarding tourism?
No, not for me.
I don't have any, thanks.
Good.
Can you tell me, so you told me the, uh, TRCC was about eight hundred thousand?
Mm-hmm.
What's TRT?
It's about one point four million.
And that's, but that's going, that's trending down right now a little bit.
A little bit. I mean, it was, it's slightly up right now, but honestly what we're looking at is June's numbers. Um, so we don't have July, we don't have August in yet, and so I don't want to say it's, you know, going anywhere right now because those are the, those are truly the indicators, those months. So, but right now it's just slightly above, but my, um, I anticipate that it'll probably end not as good as last year, so. Um, outdoor recreation.
Oh, yeah, you gave me two.
Okay, as of eight thirty, we are at seventy percent of our budget spent, uh, which is, I think is good. Um, because we're now starting to finish up our, our busy season. Um, I really wanted to express my appreciation to the Road Department and the Engineers Department and Commissioner Alma, um, for helping us remove several, um, tree debris piles out at Three Peaks. Um, they needed to clear, the BLM needed to clear a parking lot for this upcoming um, mountain bike race that's gonna bring about fifteen hundred riders to Iron County out to Three Peaks. And there was, they had to clear quite a bit of trees and foliage and, um, they were pretty big piles. They were bigger than we anticipated and, but, um, I really appreciate that our departments could come together to help them remove those piles. There were sixty, um, dump truck loads by the time they were done. We.
Sixty?
Sixty. So.
Well.
We anticipated twelve.
No, the picture you sent me, anyway, but I'm, it's so good to collaborate though and our, our road, Preston and his department are so good and, and you're so good. We appreciate. The synergy is important.
The synergy is important, like, and we honestly cannot work without them, so we, we sincerely appreciate everybody who helped us out.
Debris, limbs and stuff?
Yeah, they've been pushed up, cleared, the ground was cleared and it was all.
So where did they haul that?
To the dump.
Um, yeah, to the landfill, yeah.
To the landfill. Uh, we had, did have a fire at the shooting range on July twelfth. Um, it was started on the law enforcement range and then it spread, um, through the back of the county range and then over to the long range. Um, it did stop just before it hit the, uh, the, uh, the expensive targets that we had put in. Um, so we were glad that it stopped there. Um, it did clear out a lot of weeds, but, um, it did remind us that we probably do still need to do a fire mitigation plan um, out there at the shooting range. Um, I've talked to Ryan and I think we'll present something to you guys at the first of the year, but um, yeah, it's nice when it clears the weeds out, but if that fire had gotten away more than it had, I think we would have had some issues, some serious issues. Um, I had, had slated to get rid of the GM truck, um, because of the transfer case. It would have cost more to fix it, um, but then we ended up just fixing it. It did do, um, it put my budget over by three thousand dollars. Um, but we did do a budget adjustment at mid-year, so we still have the truck and it runs. Um. So we'll keep it till it really does die. Uh, anyways. Um, budget concerns moving forward, we do need to repave the parking lot at Woods Ranch. Um, I've been at, I've been doing outdoor rec for six years. We've never even looked at it in the six years I've been here. Um, and so, um, we had planned on building or installing another vault toilet at Woods Ranch in twenty twenty. Um, and now my thought is, is let's put the money towards the resurfacing of the parking lot because I'm assuming that it hasn't not been done probably in the last fifteen or twenty years. So it's in pretty bad shape.
It'll get completely away from us if we don't, uh, get it done.
Chip seal hold up, we'll cap there.
Well, as good as chip seal, well, not as good as that in lower elevations, but, uh.
That's what we'll do, chip seal.
I'm, I'm sure that's what we'll do.
So I believe Steve looked at it and it looks like we just need to do some, you know, pothole repair and then chip seal, so. But, um, it is something we'll need to budget. Uh, just a reminder that we do have, we do have the high school mountain bike race. We have the southern region, uh, in two weeks with seven hundred and fifty riders and then we do have the state championship in mid-October with fifteen hundred riders out at Three Peaks. Um, we're working with them to try to make this their permanent home. That's our hope. Um, they do like it, like it here and we're very accommodating, so. As far as the reservations at Woods Ranch and Three Peaks, um, we've, we have over a hundred reservations and we have about eight thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars in revenue. A lot of that is in camping fees, so. But we've seen about a twenty-five percent increase. Um, power pole, we replaced one power pole at Woods Ranch and we need to, we'll probably have to replace another one um, in this following year if we have another big snow year. So the snow took out the first power pole and we have one that's leaning right now. Um, we put in the new toilet, um, which has been working great. It's, and we removed the old toilet and sealed the vault. And right now we're just, um, kind of winter start, we'll start our winterizing at Woods Ranch in the next couple of weeks, turning down, shutting off the water. Um, just kind of doing some things up there and then we'll move all of our, most of our work to Three Peaks and the shooting range, other than doing, uh, snow removal. Um, other than that, uh, we just want to thank you for the ability to have a, a part-time person during the summer. Um, our only recommendation for next year is that we don't have them. Um, we don't post that position at the same time as Natural Resources. There were, we had a similar position posted, um, which created a kind of a we had less of a, of a pool to pull from and so we would like to have that, um, not happen next year.
Okay, yeah, talk visit with Adrian about that and timing on that.
Yeah.
I assume you've heard that we're going to put your, uh, uh, maintenance person into our road shed.
Yes.
He'll be in, have much better, uh, accommodation, so that's gonna be nice.
Yes, we appreciate that very much. We want to get out of that container that we're in right now, so.
They're good for storage, but they're not that great to work out.
No, not in the wintertime particularly, so anyways, any questions regarding parks? Okay, well, thank you.
So what, oh, well, so, so this is the picture of the new vault and then this is just?
That's the picture of the fire.
Oh, the burning.
Fire scar. So that's how close it was to the, the shooting range berm.
Wow.
So, so it was that fire you could see from, everybody was talking about it because you could see it from Cedar City, you know, it was black because it hit a tire pile. So it turned the smoke very, very black and so it was quite a few comments about that. So it wasn't our tire pile, it was the law enforcement range pile, so.
That was law enforcement.
Destructive.
Destructive. Thank you.
Not as destructive as firemen though. I want to go on the record and I think the good sheriff would, would back me up on that.
Thanks Maria for your always good reports. We appreciate it. Good sheriff.
Oh, Ken, thanks.
Good morning. It's a pleasure to be with you today. Uh, just to start off, our overall budget status is at sixty-three percent. We'll go ahead and talk about some of the areas where we're, uh, over or approaching, uh, the hundred percent mark a little bit later on. Our culinary cost per mil right now is running at ninety-seven cents per mil, uh, which is a little bit down from last quarter, a little bit up from the first quarter. Our total bookings for this quarter is four hundred and seventy-eight. It's been a constant increase since the beginning of the year. On our, uh, total inmates transported, we're at five hundred and eighty-eight, which is significantly up. Part of that has to do with federal transports. We're doing a lot more federal transport, uh, in part due to JRI where uh, we're not getting the prosecution out of state law that we want to see for some of our more serious things and so a lot of the, uh, uh, more serious things are being prosecuted federally. And as a result, we're having to make those transports down to St. George. Uh, they're also getting more transports out to Panacya, interestingly enough. So transport's up quite a bit. On our, our, uh, jail work crews, uh, around the jail area, there's been three hundred and twenty-six hours, over one thousand hours out at the fair over the, the fair weekend. Uh, roads, five hundred and forty-two hours, parks and recreation, about ninety-five hours, uh, for a total of two thousand one hundred and sixty hours of, uh, of work crew, hours worked. On vacancies, we currently have, uh, Lieutenant Cuthers' position is open. We're working towards testing for that. We're going to be testing internally. We have, uh, three good sergeants that have put in for that position that will be interviewing for that, that particular job.
She surprised us, or at least me. I didn't realize that, uh, she had come to the end of her career.
Well, I, I think it, it, it happened quicker than what she had anticipated, uh, but because of some personal reasons, wanting to be a mom to her children and help her husband with, uh, his business, uh, she felt that the time was right and so she, she decided really pretty quickly that, that it was time for her to go ahead and retire and, you know, we, we respect that. We'll miss having her. She did a wonderful job and we'll, uh, but we've got some great sergeants and I think that they'll be able to to find somebody that will replace her and will do also a very admirable job as well, so.
She did do a great job. We appreciate, uh, Ms. Cuthers, Joanna for, uh, her job is, excuse me, for the wonderful job she did as a jail foreman. Just wanted publicly say that.
Yeah, she, she did a fantastic job. It's like I said, you know, and, uh, when I first got here. Yeah, she, she did a fantastic job, it's like I said, you know, and uh, when I first got here, uh, fifteen years ago, when I retired from the Marine Corps and became, came back to, to Cedar City. She was uh, one of my first friends in the jail and, and uh, always had a very positive relationship with her and, and uh, very much appreciate the job that she did. She did a wonderful job, but like I said, we've got some great people there and, and I think that we'll be able to find someone that will also do a very admirable job. Uh, we just hired Deputy McConnell, who is one of our part-time deputies over as a bailiff in the court. To uh, go over to the jail and work as a corrections deputy. So he's going from part-time to full-time, that's already come before you and it's been approved. Uh, and also, we've, we've hired Deputy Roman from the jail to go over to the patrol side of the house. And uh, so both of them will be going to post respectively for the LE block or for the corrections block in October. And uh, currently we have two on FMLA. Uh, some of the maintenance projects that are coming up, we've got uh, a lot of, of uh, issues with our jail. Our jail is the oldest jail in the state. It is suffering the effects of old age and is deteriorating. And uh, we need to, to sit down and, and seriously talk about a new jail facility and, and uh, put together a plan of how we're going to get from where we are to where we, where we need to be. Um, some of the things that are coming up, currently our back parking lot needs to be addressed in the near future. Uh, there are several uh, projects around the jail, uh, concrete projects that Mike hasn't even been able to get anyone to bid on. Because they're not big enough projects for them to really be interested in. But uh, things that, right now he really doesn't have the, the time to do. So we're going to have to figure out what we're going to do to, to take care of some of those projects. He and I didn't have time to get into it specifically, he just told me this morning as I was on my way out the door, that there's some concrete projects that he hasn't even been able to get anyone to bid on. And that he just doesn't have the time to address right now.
He's put them out to bid, he's put them out to bid.
He has put them out to bid, yes. Uh, projects in the culinary area, uh, where the formica has uh, been breaking off and coming up off the counter. Uh, they, they kinda did a, uh, just a, the epoxy paint on it last year to get by. But that's going to have to be addressed and fixed properly. Uh, you know, there's just been a number of things that we've talked about in the, the past, some of the sewer issues, uh, HVAC issues. You know, it's just a, it's an old jail, it's just starting to feel the, the effects of old age and is, is deteriorating. So again, like I say, we, we need to really take a good look at that and talk about it and formulate a plan on, on how we get, need to get to where we need to be. We, as I said, that we're getting ready to send McDonald to uh, the basic corrections officer block in October. We currently have two SU students that are uh, in, as, serving as interns currently. And we have uh, three candidates that are currently undergoing background process prior to filling one of the vacant, vacancies that uh, is pending from Roman's transfer.
What have you got your interns doing, I'm always curious?
Uh, one of them has been working directly with uh, Ronan and has been doing a lot of different things like fingerprint card input and different things like that. The other one's been working a lot with the, with the uh, deputies up in the uh, command center, overwatching the jail. And he's, he's uh, looking at going and doing some ride-alongs with us and some different things to get some exposure to law enforcement.
Good program.
It is a good program and, and uh, you know, it's a good opportunity for some of those students that are especially in uh, you know, the criminal justice field. To be able to take a look at what really happens on the law enforcement side of, of the world and see if it's something that they really are interested in and want to pursue in the future. On our jail revenue side, uh, our total revenue is four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-six cents. Um, and on our budget side, well, let me just go back lots of, to the culinary. Again, like I said, our culinary is uh, running at ninety-seven cents per mil. Then on our budget side, our biggest uh, overage is on overtime. Our overtime right now is at a hundred and fifty-three point seven seven percent, uh, sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty-one cents. A lot of that has to do with mental health. Um, one of the, one of the big issues that we're running into is that, uh, unfortunately, the, the jails have become society's answer for uh, people that, that are suffering from mental health crisis that they don't know what to do with. And uh, a lot of these, these folks are coming into our jails uh, with substance abuse issues where, you know, they've either been pre-diagnosed with mental health issues. But because they don't have insurance or anything else, uh, they don't have the medications to be able to deal with their issues. And they begin, begin to self-medicate, which leads into other criminal activity and they end up getting arrested. When they come into the jail, a, a number of them are placed on suicide watch. And because of that, our numbers in the booking area have gone from five deputies to six deputies. Because we have to keep them under twenty-four hour surveillance and, and again, because of the age of our jail and the design of our jail. There's really no place else for us to put them or we can uh, provide them adequate coverage. And, and so that's where a big part of our overtime budget has come from. As a result, uh, as we move into the budget year, we're, we're going to be asking for two new deputies in order to help cover that, that shortfall there. And then two new de- deputies in uh, transport because of the, the influx in our transport hours. And that's the other big part of our overtime cost is the trans, transport side.
So explain the transport side, are we getting more feds than we had in the past?
We're doing a lot more federal transport uh, down to, to the courts, to the federal courts. So there, uh, every week they're doing two to three transports up to Davis County. They're doing several transports down to St. George. Uh, you know, they're, they're getting tasked with more transports out to Panaca, uh, because of the federal court system and whatnot.
Do they reimburse us for that?
Uh, honestly, I'm not sure what the, what the reimbursement is on that. I'd have to, to uh, talk with the transport side to, to get a good answer for you on that.
Do you know Dan, do we get? All right, well, let me dig a little, so we're not necessarily getting more prisoners, I know we get paid.
No, in fact, right now we're, we're really down, you know.
But why, so why have the transports increased, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
Because of J, JRI. Okay, the, the Justice Reinvestment Initiative, uh, in my opinion, has destroyed Utah's uh, justice system. And uh, as a result of JRI, our, our jail has become a revolving door with our court system. Where uh, you know, inmates come in, they're uh, seen by the judge, they're released, they go back out, reoffend, they come back in, seen by the judge, they're released. And so with, with some of our more serious court cases, some of the drug cases, weapon offenses, sex offenses. Uh, we're now going with federal prosecution instead of state prosecution. Because it's the only way that we're getting sentences that are, are actually holding people accountable. And as a result, uh, we're having a lot more inmates that are going to court within the federal system than the state system. So that's a, a big part of our, our transport cost.
So we make that decision or I mean, does the crime have to be a?
It depend, it, it, it's between the law enforcement agency and our county prosecutor and the uh, federal prosecutor. So when we get these, these cases that we feel should be prosecuted federally, then we send that down to the, to the federal prosecutor. They review the case and then tell us whether they'll accept that case or not. But it's made by the, by the arresting agency, not necessarily by us, sometimes it's us. So if you look at our numbers, you know, uh, hundred and seventy-five arrests were by the sheriff's office. Of those hundred and seventy-five, those would be ours to, to look at as to whether we were going to, to seek federal prosecution or not.
So that's, so, so you're going the federal way because the state way's not working?
Correct.
So they, do they admit it's not working, the state?
Yeah, so right now, uh, just recently I've met, well, we, we had a luncheon with uh, Governor Herbert here, uh, month and a half ago or so. Where we expressed our concerns about JRI to him, uh, myself, Chief Adams and uh, Chad Dotson. Had a phone conference with his general counsel and uh, had a very good conversation with him about JRI and its shortcomings. Uh, I just met last week, beginning of last week, with the legislative auditor about JRI. And we're beginning to uh, collect information for them to do an audit on JRI to show what its shortcomings are. So, from our hope is, is that JRI will be significantly modified. And uh, that we'll be able to find some good solutions to its shortcomings. You know, in, in concept, JRI I think is a good thing. In concept, the idea is, is that, that there's a lot of good people that have an addiction. And, and that if we can help them with their addiction, then they can return to society and become a productive uh, part of society. But the problem in that is, is that it doesn't address those that are happy with the choices that they're making currently. And that, that the way JRI currently functions is, it doesn't matter whether they want to seek treatment or not. They're being released back out on our streets and if they don't want to change, then they're continuing to behave in the same pattern that they've behaved in the past. And are continuing to revictimize our communities through property crimes and, and burglaries and, and uh, and then other issues with, you know, domestic violence or other types of violence that, that affect our communities. And, and we're not, you know, the judicial system isn't holding them accountable for that, they're just releasing them back out on the street. And that's, that's where JRI is failing. So those are the type things that, that we need to be able to distinguish between or, or those people that sincerely want to, to seek uh, rehabilitation. And be able to assist them in that rehabilitative effort. As opposed to those that are, are happy in the, in the lifestyle that they're choosing and, and hold them accountable for their criminal activity.
Have you spoken with uh, Senator Bickers and Representative Ship by any chance regarding that?
We've talked with them quite a bit about it and, and we talk a lot with them over the legislative session. Whenever uh, varying bills come up that, that affect this one way or the other. Uh, but both Senator Bickers and Representative Ship are very aware of, of law enforcement's position on JRI and, and what we believe are its shortcomings are. And I think that's part of the reason that we're finally starting to see uh, efforts to, to audit is because that our legislation I think is beginning to understand that JRI in its current configuration isn't working.
Can I, when, when was JRI, JRI signed into effect?
Yeah, I don't remember the exact date, but it's been about six or seven years ago now.
That's what I was thinking about, seven years-ish, then uh, you know, to add to what the sheriff said. So, sentences for, for drug crimes and other crimes like that mandated of, or, or lesser sentences, like you said, it's a revolving door. The other problem, the, and the idea behind JRI is well, we're going to send them to therapy, we're going to send them to rehab, we're going to get them better and so they don't reoffend. The problem is it's an unfunded mandate, so there's, you know, we're mandated to, to give them the opportunity to go to rehabilitation. But there's absolutely no funding that was attached to that bill. So they're, they're, we're, we're mandated to send them to resources that don't exist.
And the other, the other part of that that we're seeing is, is that the state believed that, what, part of what they did in, with JRI at the beginning was they took things like uh, possession of heroin and methamphetamine, dangerous drugs like that. And they reduced them from felony offenses to misdemeanor offenses. And what that did for the state was, is it took them out of the state uh, correction system and put them into the county correction system. So everybody that would have been going to prison for, for these types of offenses are now being pushed into our local jails. Which has driven our, our jail populations up. And, and in theory, what was going to happen was, was that was going to save the state all kinds of money. Because now they weren't going to have to, to house non-violent inmates. And so, it was going to save them a tremendous amount of money on housing costs. In reality, the state has been building their new prison. Uh, and as we've talked with corrections, the, the, the prison isn't even complete yet. And that, yet the state corrections is already looking for housing for a thousand inmates that they don't have bed space for when the new prison is, is completed. So, what has happened in reality is, is a lot of these people have become more violent. They're not even looking at those, you know, at taking non-violent crimes, they're only looking at taking those that are, are more violent. So what you're seeing is, is an uptick in things like gun violence. Where we never used to see the gun violence in certain drug crimes, now we're seeing gun violence involved in, in, in drug crimes because there's no penalty. And these people understand that they can get away with a lot more than what they've ever been able to get away with. So what it's actually done is it's driven the crime rate up. And that's, you know, one of the things that I think that we're, we're feeling the effects. So, so for example, uh, in the past, we've housed on average about thirty federal inmates. Right now we're down to twenty federal inmates, so we don't have space, which is affecting us when we're getting paid seventy-five dollars a day to house federal inmates, but we have to reduce that by a third. And that's a third less income that, that we're able to generate by housing federal inmates. Or same thing with state inmates, I think the, the state inmate rate is about fifty-five dollars a day. But right now we're, we're only housing uh, ten state inmates. You know, so, um, you know, it, 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 it hurts the county all the way around.
So they started out with four thousand beds right in the jail up there in their building and now it's down to like thirty-six hundred? Have they cut a bunch out to cut the costs back, is there way over on budget?
Yeah, so, but they're, they've already got a thousand more inmates and they have bed space when the jail's complete.
It'll be less capacity in their old jail on, at the point of the mountain, right?
Yeah.
I got a, I received a text the other day, uh, from one of our local folks. I'm just kinda re- reviewing it, making sure that I've got the right deal, but anyway, there was a guy. And, and this is an article from the Cedar City News, I mean, this is a local, uh, and this is a local case. In fact, there's this booking photo in the Iron County Jail. Uh, had four pounds of raw marijuana, um, two pounds of keef, which is really concentrated marijuana. It's actually like the crystals that house all of the THC. Uh, eighty-five hundred dollars in cash, uh, pled guilty. Um, sentenced to thirty days in jail with three years of probation. So, that's, that's thirty days in the Iron County Jail. So the comments were, gosh, I mean, what's the street value of this, of this drug? I, I only need two hundred thousand dollars to pay off my house and it'd be worth it to go make a couple of runs. Knowing that if I get caught, it's only gonna ca, it's only gonna, they're only gonna penalize me thirty days in jail. I'd do thirty days in jail standing on my head for the opportunity to make a, you know, several hundred thousand dollars, be out of debt. And I, and I, that, that text was tongue-in-cheek. And I, and I, that, that text was tongue-in-cheek, but really that's the reality of it. I mean, you can, you know, run drugs for the cartel and make a whole lot of money. And if you get caught, you do thirty days in jail. So don't, no big deal. But that's, and that's a direct effect of JRI.
Whereas before, it would have been what?
Uh, that would have been a second degree felony punishable to, uh, one to fifteen years in prison. Um, you may not have gone to prison, uh, but, you know, the judge has some leeway in sentencing. That person may or may not have gone to prison. It depends on their criminal record. But as of now, even with a criminal record and, and this type of thing, that guy's not gonna do any prison time. That's, that's, uh, I mean, thirty days in the county jails, that's nothing. For these, especially for people who are, uh, who've been incarcerated and are kind of already, uh, I mean, that's, that's, a lot of people are more comfortable in jail than they are on the outside. Or if they go to jail, I mean, it's just not a big deal. They can, I mean, thirty days is a walk in the park. It's not even a punishment.
Yeah, and that, you know, and you look at the legislation here last year on reducing the DUI from point zero eight to point zero five. And right now, people are getting punished more severely for a point zero five DUI than they are for, for the use of heroin or the use of methamphetamine or the use of fentanyl, which is killing people everywhere.
Unintended consequences of the state's actions. I know they just, like say, they just wanted to push it off on the counties. They wanted to reduce the amount of people in jails, but it's just, it's not working. Not working. So hopefully the legislature will act. We need to keep lobbying them heavily. Somebody's gotta push a bill through and modify this in a big, in a large way.
Yes.
Any questions at all that I can answer for you or? Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sheriff. Okay, I have the minutes of August twelfth, two thousand nineteen of Iron County Commission meeting. Is there any discussion? Not, I would entertain a motion.
I would move for approval of the minutes of August twelfth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of the Iron County Commission meeting of August twelfth, two thousand nineteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, I will sign this. We'll take a short break and reconvene at ten o'clock for our, uh, public appointment.
Okay, go ahead.
We are reconvened. Uh, item number one, uh, public comment period. Anyone who'd like to, uh, make a comment from the public, uh, you're welcome to do so. Please come forward to the stand and state your name. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item two. Discussion and request for signage and county awareness of illegal dumping in a near Three Peaks recreational area. Also requesting possible road maintenance requested by Peter Thornton. Would you come forward, sir, and state your case, please?
Good morning, gentlemen. I thank you for letting me come before you. I want to thank Sheriff Carpenter for his service. And I know he's got some real meaningful things going on, so I hope this can give you an idea of what's going on up in Three Peaks in our county. A lot of dumping going on. If you jump and show the pictures, you'll see. I drove around a little bit out of my area.
Oh, there we go.
We have.
Turned off the displays on accident.
Okay, we have, um, easy access to the Three Peaks area down my road, which is thirty-six hundred north. And like I said a couple of weeks ago, it is the fastest way to get to Three Peaks. It's the easiest. This is all in the trees up around our area there. And we have no signage out there at all that discourages anybody from dumping. You can just go through them and let everybody just get an idea of what's going on up there. And, you know, once you get back in the trees there, nobody can see what you're doing. Nobody will go up Mid Valley, nobody will go up Iron Springs unless they wanted to dump legally, which apparently they're not wanting to do that. So they have an easy access to come up to this area, which is in our county. It's up by our park. It's up by our campground. It's, uh, out there in a very beautiful area that is being just neglected out there because people obviously don't care and they're just dumping at will. And there's, uh, really, once it's there, if nobody sees them or catches them, then now we've got a big pile out there that we have to find some way to go out there and clean it up, or it just sits there and becomes part of the hillside. So what I'm trying to see is if we can get any type of signage out there on that road that at least give people an idea that, hey, if you get caught, you know, you're gonna pay a penalty here, even if it's a monetary one. I think it's beneficial to our area to at least, and it, it's not a real, I don't think it'd be a real expensive deterrent other than just a couple of, uh, signs. But the cleanup out there is, eventually somebody will have to do it or not do it, and it'll just get worse. And we got a real pretty area up there. And this really breaks my heart to drive around up there and come across all these illegal dumpings that people are just getting rid of their trash. Not to mention, some of those are where people have gone up there and lived in the trees up there for months at a time, so. Anyways, that's my, uh, that's my plea. And I know even all the way down Lund, there's areas down there that are just being overrun. People are buying it up and if you drive down Lund, you'll just see one lot has just got at least five hundred washers and dryers and other appliances just stacked out there. I, for what reason, I have no idea, but it sure is an eyesore, as well as cars. These people here have been sleeping out there, so. Anyways, that's all. I, I just think just a little bit of an effort to put some signs out there to, you know, create, uh, a situation where people now feel like they, if they do get caught, that they can be, uh, fined, you know? I know thirty days in a jail didn't sound like much, but if they get hit with a two thousand, five thousand dollar fine for doing this kind of mess out there, that might stop them right there from coming out there.
Okay, well, thank you. Yeah, it's disturbing for sure. And you have met with the sheriff then.
Yes.
Said, so, and, and we have a great sign shop at our road department. Uh, I'm sure we can, uh, make up some good signs.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what the, the state law is regarding fines. I know it used to be two hundred and ninety-nine dollars. There were signs all over the place for littering. I'm sure it's more than that now, but, uh.
Like I said, when they come in that particular road, which is the fastest and easiest way to get up to Three Peaks, once they get past a couple of, uh, areas and get into the trees, they've got access all over up there. There's nice little hiding spots and they can dump wherever they want. If nobody sees them, it's a done deal, you know?
Any luck finding names or addresses on any of these?
They, I spoke to one of the officers. They did find one that was up there, living up there for a while. And it was a frequent flyer that had dumped and left all their stuff up there. From what I understand, he did get a fine or he got a, a citation. And I believe he was arrested for illegal dumping. And, uh, they had asked him, you know, if you clean up the mess that you left behind before you go before the judge, it could be better for you in the long run. So whether that's happened or not, I don't know.
So if the state law's two ninety-nine, can we up that?
Well, and I'm sure it's changed. And that's when I was a kid, that was a long time ago.
But I mean, it's just such a terrible mess up there, you know? And like if somebody had to go up there and clean it, you know, we can give volunteers, whatever. But it's just, it's, it's an eyesore. And if nobody goes out there and cleans that up, then, you know, it's just gonna sit there and eventually just become a permanent scar on Three Peaks up there.
Is this on private property, these pictures?
Some of that, a lot of that's on state property. You know, 'cause I had had, when I discovered this site right here, I had, uh, called the sheriff's department dispatch and they sent an officer out and they pinpointed that area. And it was state where if they're up there and it's on state land, I believe they have sixteen days? Sixteen days and, and that's what the last one had done, is he had stayed in that spot for sixteen days and then he moved. But when one of the officers went and looked at his old campsite, that's where the truck, that art, that ATV, all that other garbage was out there. So they found him again, from what I understood, he was just moved to a different area.
Yeah.
And if they're gonna trash one area like that, I guarantee you, they're gonna trash the next area they go to. And it'll just be a continuation, um, till that whole area up there is just gonna turn into a landfill, which by the way, is only two miles from where they're doing all this dumping. I mean, it's right around the corner. If they just legally went the rest of the way through, they'd be right there at the dump and then they could do it properly. But when you live in there, they're not even, you know, they're not boxing nothing up or anything. It's just trash that they're throwing out there.
Right. Well, we have the sheriff here. We have our road superintendent, Preston Nelson. And we have, uh, Bruce Anderson, our landfill director. Do any of you gentlemen have any comments on this or what we might?
I know we spoke the other day. I, I agree. It's, it's a problem.
Yeah, that's all I wanna do is bring that just so you can see exactly what's going on up there. 'Cause if you don't get inside those trees, you know, it just sounds like another person complaining about something.
Through there, just on the main road from, from your home to the landfill, and it's close. It's not very far.
Yeah.
But I didn't see anything, you know, I didn't get outside of the, outside of the road.
Yeah, if you break off on any of those trails and you get up inside there, that's where all this dumping is at.
But I, I will say that I've had good success with the sheriff helping on them things, you know? When I found them, the sheriff department's been there to help and done a great job. And we found two or three of them able to rectify them situations.
Yeah.
I didn't.
That's why I felt if we could at least get some signs coming past Park West on forty-five hundred and maybe, I mean, I don't think too many of them come from off, off of Iron Springs 'cause if they're already there, they're going to the dump. So I don't think any of them come past, uh, Melanie's place out there, the OM Ranch. They're all coming from Park West and, and Buena Vista, Montevista, Hunter Glen, Equestrian Point, all those places down there. Everybody knows. They just said whatever they clean up their house with, go that way. It takes you right up in the trees, you know? Not everybody's that way, but obviously some people don't care. And if they don't get caught, then they'll continue. They'll come back with their next load. So if we could do any signage at all, it'd be great.
Okay, uh, we have a comment from.
This, it would be on just SITLA or private. This is also on BLM. Probably more so on BLM than anywhere else.
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, even, even over by the dump. Desert bound road, you can go up there anywhere and find old couches, washing machines, TVs where people shoot them and just leave them out there, concrete where people haul them off and just dump them. It's sad because they're only a quarter mile from the dump.
Yeah, true.
And I've, I've lived in a lot of other counties where, in a lot of the states where you pay thirty-five, forty dollars they can pick up and dump it. We're fortunate here in, in Iron County to be able to go and dump it there without that heavy charge each time we want to go to the dump.
Yeah.
Yeah, as long as it's household, that you've already paid your four dollars. Yeah, no.
Percent of what was there would have been free.
So.
Yeah, and I, I'm wondering if this should be something that we, we get BLM and. Yeah, and I'm wondering if this should be something that we get BLM and Sittler together, and some of the landowners out there that are having problems, and just see what we can do, if there's some way we can organize something, either signage or whatever else.
Sheriff, you have a comment?
This really is a huge problem, and it's not just trash. I mean, we've recovered stolen vehicles out there that have been stolen, taken out, hidden in the trees, and then later they've come back out and totally stripped the vehicles, ground all the written numbers off of them and whatnot, and we've recovered several stolen vehicles out there. You know, you have this type of behavior. Peter was just saying, you know, one of my deputies, two weeks ago, went out and identified one of these sites, told him, "You need to make sure you clean this up." Told him that he had his sixteen days. When he came back, he had moved and was trashing another site, so he arrested him and took him over to the first site and made him clean it up. So, I mean, this is, it is an ongoing, ongoing problem from multi, multi-areas. And not just that, it's, you know, you go out there and you look at Three Peaks and the signs are shot, all the pieces, you know, just a lot of vandalism and destruction.
Yeah.
You know, because of some of the issues that we've been having, and because of what the state can do through state law as opposed to what BLM can do, you know, I ended up deputizing one of the BLM rangers so that he can enforce some of the state laws as far as, you know, things like this, and abandoned vehicles that are getting dumped out on BLM property and things like that, so that they don't always have to call the deputies when he comes across that stuff. He can go ahead and cite it under, under the state law instead of under federal law, and try to make it a little bit easier for him. But it, it's a huge problem. There's no question about it.
So it's something we're controlling as much as possible, or our sheriff's department has a wide range to cover, but they're, so...
You know, unfortunately, that's not the only area in the county that we have these kind of problems. You know, two thousand flushes, you know, we get a lot of issues out there, and parks of the county, same, same type of the situation.
Yeah, and if you go out there with them private properties, like the one next to me, if you start fencing off, you know, if you encourage the owners to fence it, then you're also cutting out all the trails that people like to go out there and utilize that area out there, you know? I mean, the Boy Scouts go up there, there's a lot of people. They used to have ESPN, they had the off-road races through that area, and now it's, like I said, it's not being utilized in the proper way. It's just turning into an eyesore that if it can be addressed now, before it gets a whole lot worse, because like I say, if they know they can dump, and there's dumping up there, they're gonna continue, you know? And so I think it's something that should be at least looked into to take care of it now before it gets any worse. It's a real pretty area up there, and it's just...
Okay, well, we're amenable to doing the signage, Preston, and we'll definitely continue our patrols and do the best we can, and by citing people, I know that's gonna make a big difference.
Yeah, and I see the sheriffs out there all the time, I really do. They're out there. But if you get, you gotta get off that main road like you were on there. Once you get up into those trails, you just, you become invisible up there. And you can get into those trees and nobody can see anything you're doing. That's how those people managed to live up there for so long.
Yeah.
You know, I only spotted it when they moved, coming up the dirt road up right past Park West. I looked into the trees, and I noticed there was something that moved up there, and I could see it sticking out in the trees. And so that's when I went up there that, that day with my ATV, and I saw where the trailer had moved, so I went back to this site here, and I was like, aw, man, 'cause that's where they were camped the first time. And so that's what they were doing, was now move to a new area and go trash it. And it's nasty. That's just part of the picture. That stuff is scattered all over up inside there, you know?
Well, thank you very much.
Okay, I appreciate your time.
Not, not a new problem, but we appreciate you bringing this to light, and...
We appreciate the continued awareness, you know. Thank you for, for keeping it in the forefront. We can deal with it.
Our area's growing out there fast. A lot of people are coming, so that's why I say if it's something we can, I wish I could say nipping the bud, but that bud's pretty big now, so... Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item number three, approval for an October Harvest Fest event held at forty-three-twenty-six North, twenty-one-hundred East, Cedar City. Event days, October fourth and fifth, eleventh and twelfth, seventeenth, eighteenth, and twenty-first of this year, requested by Heather Carter with Nature Hills Farm. Is Ms. Carter here?
She's not here. I, she asked me if I would speak to that. She was unable to be here this morning, so I told her, "No problem." Nature Hills Farm is a, it's a hobby farm. They have a business license. They're designated as a hobby farm in that area. Basically, what they like to do at the end of the season is, you know, she sent me kind of a little write-up here. I am just going to read that. "The celebration of fall is great for all ages. Head over to Nature Hills Farm. Enjoy the slow life on the farm by taking a leisurely hayride, grab a pumpkin spice hot cocoa, sit under a tree, watch the animals, take pictures, play yard games, pick out the perfect pumpkin, spend time with your family eating smores and drinking freshly pressed apple cider. There's something for everyone. You can spend hours enjoying the farm life or leave after a short time. The farm store will be fully stocked with all of your harvest needs and goodies. Come celebrate the change of season." We looked into, she had some questions about the, how to legally do that. We went back and forth and found the, the best way to do it would be for a special event request approved by the commission,
so... Well, you're taking me clear out of here. I want to go drink some water.
I know I got that, too. I'm like, I'm looking. I will say that I, Heather's husband, Travis, is a, is a police officer at the Cedar City Police Department. I want nothing to do with the hayride unless Travis, and I want to say this publicly, wears overalls, no shirt, big piece of straw sticking out of his mouth. I think that that should, the approval of this should be contingent on Travis driving the trailer in such a manner.
You want that in my motion?
Yes.
I leave for one minute.
Let's go to pot.
Thanks for that presentation.
I would move to approve the October Harvest Fest, the event held at forty-three-twenty-six North, twenty-one-hundred West in Cedar City, and those dates are October fourth through the fifth, eleventh, twelfth, seventeenth, eighteenth, and twenty-first of this year, requested by Heather Carter.
Would second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve the October Harvest Fest event, requested by Heather Carter. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Item number four, resolution two thousand nineteen dash eight, supporting the creation of an Old Iron Town State Monument. I received a call from Mr. Rasmussen, Jeff Rasmussen, who is the State Parks Director, saying that they have an interest in making some of the special places in Utah state monuments. They wouldn't rise to the level of a, of a state park, but state monuments. And the first one they had on their list was Old Iron Town, and if you've been there, it definitely meets that level. And so as a commission, we've talked, and Maria is very in support of this, and the first step is to do a resolution supporting this, so that's what we're doing at this time. Is there any further comments or discussion?
Sounds like a great plan.
Yeah, it's a neat idea.
Oh, and let me just say, the signage that's there is kind of, kind of discourages people because it tells, it says everything you can't do, and so that will be changed, and some other things. And Maria's gonna have input on the changes, and we appreciate them being willing to do that and get local input. And anyway, I think it'll be a great thing, and it will definitely raise awareness of this park and, or this monument, and it will increase our tourism, so, anyway.
I would move for approval, move, excuse me, move for approval of resolution twenty nineteen dash eight, supporting the creation of an Old Iron Town State Monument.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve resolution two thousand nineteen dash eight, supporting the creation of an Old Iron Town State Monument. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item number five, personnel. Morning, Adrian.
Morning, commissioners. Uh, just a couple personnel-related matters on the agenda today. The first one listed is regarding Mr. Reed Erickson, our Planner and Services Coordinator. We have had some recent discussion, and in light of our Building and Zoning Administrator's recent retirement, Reed has been acting as the interim Building and Zoning Administrator, and wanted to bring a request before the commission today just to address these added duties and possibly a request for an increase in pay for taking on the added responsibilities just for the time being until we can fill the, the Building and Zoning Administrator position, which may take us a little bit of time, just as we kind of reevaluate the position and, and the department needs. But it's something that we'll be working on, you know, and obviously, the commission will be giving some insight and direction. But again, in the interim, Mr. Reed is, or Mr. Erickson is volunteered or, and accepted the, you know, the request to act in that interim response, you know, interim position, and I don't have a specific pay increase. I think it's, you know, probably suitable to consider five or ten percent, but we're really just gonna look for discussion to occur.
What exactly is, it's the interim Building and Zoning Administrator? Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I had that right.
But then he'll obviously keep his current responsibilities and duties as the Planner and Services Coordinator.
Right.
But it's just adding more to his plate, and he's happy to do it, but just in fairness to him, it will increase his workload, and I'm sure his hours will increase a little bit, and responsibility, and, and he'll do a good job. We just, again, in fairness to him, I just wanted to bring a request of, you know, some kind of a, an increase, just in good faith.
Yeah, I'm in favor of this. Do you have any history of what we've done in the past in these situations? Really, I think, at least I would like a recommendation from you on what percentage we...
Okay. You know, the, the past precedent has just been, usually it's in terms of somebody acting and going to a pay range that's a little bit higher, and then, so that kind of sets a precedent because we just go to the higher pay range. In this case, those positions are very equal, but, and his current position is a little higher, just a slightly higher pay range, but I think ten percent would be adequate, and I think that would be my recommendation, even though I couldn't find a precedent, but I do think it's reasonable. Just, and for number purposes, a ten percent increase would be...
And it'd be prorated for the time.
Right, yeah, just, so a ten percent increase would be, you know, six hundred thirty dollars, seventy-two cents a month would be what the, and I would anticipate it'd probably be one to two months estimated.
Okay.
So minimal, but again, in good faith, I think fair.
Yeah, taking on a lot of responsibility, extra responsibility, so... Any further discussion, commissioners?
No.
No. I would, I would move to approve the ten percent increase, being prorated for the time period that that responsibility's taken.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve interim position pay for Reed Erickson effective August twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, of ten percent. And this is to take over the responsibilities of the zoning administrator, building inspector for the county on a temporary basis, and the pay, the increase, of course, will be on the temporary basis. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
And the item B listed under Personnel is simply just a request for formal approval of the, of the sick leave extension for Iron County employee Rhonda Warren. This is just to coincide with our recent update to the policy that states that anything beyond the twelve, the standard twelve-week absence requires commission approval. The, we are planning on the end date for her sick leave status to be September twenty-first. That will be the end of the allowed sixty days under policy, so just looking again for formal approval of that extension that has been in place.
All right, thank you.
I would move for approval of a sixty-day sick, sick leave extension for Rhonda Warren.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve a sixty-day sick, sick leave extension for Rhonda Warren. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you condescend them again?
In September twenty-first. And that's been communicated. This is, I'm just a little bit behind. This isn't anything new. This has been, of course, been correspondence both verbally and in writing, to let them know that the twenty-first is the anticipated date.
Okay, is there any prairie dog matters?
Happily no.
Anything regarding county boards? Okay, Chair declares adjournment. Thank you all for being here and your participation. Got you out here just right. Perfect. Have a good trip.